Everybody's here on time today. We're doing great.
Wonderful. I have not counted how many people are here, so.
I'm trying to do that now, but it keeps shifting.
I won't let anyone in for a second, so you can count and then I'll let. There's nobody waiting.
I believe that we're at seven right now. Let me try again. Amy, Bob, Catherine, Susan, Paul, Henry, Tasha. And the other folks are alternates. So we have seven and we need eight. So I guess I was wrong. I thought that it looked like there were so many people here. I assumed that we were already at Quorum.
It's because we were being loud and boisterous at 7:30 in the morning, threw you all off.
Oh, no, wait a second. I can't even keep track of the numbers. With Feinsberg's departure, we now have thirteen, so seven is fine.
Wait, but what about Essex, Essex?
And so they're not here, but but we just need to, because we have eight urban commissioners now, right? And four, I don't know, eight urban municipalities with Burlington at two, so that's nine. And then the four rural commissioners, that gets us to thirteen. So seven is more than Quorum.
Okay.
But we still need to have Chapin, Spencer, I don't see Andrea, and then our two folks from Essex, I think, are the are the folks that were that are jumping out that we're missing. But I think that we can proceed with Quorum.
Okay.
Essex or Essex Junction?
Oh, Paul's here from Essex, Town of Essex. Yeah, so we do have our Town of Essex person. One of the things that you all should know by now is that you should not listen to me.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. I will get the meeting started, knowing that folks will trickle in in the next minute or two. It's 7:32. The next item on our agenda is to adjust the agenda, and I know Clayton had a recommendation that we move number eleven, the ADA Fair Collection up above item nine, so it'll become kind of eight and a half. Does that work for everybody? Any objections? Good morning, everybody. Okay, so we will do that. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda that folks want to recommend? Catherine?
Yeah, I'd just like to correct the agenda for the where it says potential executive session. There's no topic listed there. And we need to list the topic now with the changes to the open meeting law, so it should say, I'm assuming it's related to the next item below. So perhaps we could combine those two into one agenda item?
Happy to do that.
Okay, when we get there, I will try to remember to say that out loud. Okay, anything else? Thank you, by the way, Catherine, for helping us out always on the open meeting law. It's really helpful. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak?
Chris, you're the only one in the boardroom, right?
No one else is in the boardroom.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. There's included in that is the board meeting minutes from our lovely retreat in July and the check register. Will entertain a motion to approve or certainly any comments?
I will approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Paul. May I have a second? Thanks, Henry. Are there any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Sentience? Okay, we're moving on. Matt, I'm gonna kick it to you. We're gonna start with the capital projects update, which was included in the meeting packet.
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, so as Amy said, there's a memo in the board packet outlining the capital projects that were completed or worked on over the previous two quarters and a little snapshot at what's ongoing. I'm not going to read the memo to everyone. I'll just keep this high level. So starting with the fire suppression upgrades, as you all may recall, the Burlington Fire Marshal required upgrades to our fire suppression system in order for us to be able to charge buses indoors. And on March 10th, he started that work with FireTech. And the scope of this was to upgrade the fire, the sprinkler system inside the bus storage garage to increase the flow capacity. I won't get into the detailed numbers, but essentially it required the installation of a new six-inch main that would serve just the bus storage garage. And the scope of this project was to capture the sprinkler system in the entire garage. We originally were going to do a phased-in approach over multiple years. Decided to just do the entire garage in one shot. And so that work started on March, in March. Partway through that, the FTA provided a notice that unobligated federal grants were at risk to be clawed back, so that did cause us to need to stop work as the federal grant that was funding this project was unobligated in trams at the time, and so there was a question of whether those funds would continue to be available. That was resolved relatively quickly. Region One confirmed that that money would not be clawed back, so we were able to restart, but it did result in about a month-long pause in the project, and FireTech resumed work towards the end of April. And the project was completed around July. They had a FireTech had a couple of inspections, including one with the Burlington Fire Marshal on July 28th. No issues identified with the project and the with the construction and the new main and branch lines throughout the garage were integrated into our building-wide sprinkler system and are now in operation. Related to fire suppression work, another directive of the Fire Marshal was to integrate our ventilation systems in the garage with some some form of controls that could be utilized by fire department personnel, as well as tie into our fire alarm panel, so that those ventilation, so the ventilation can be turned on or off depending on the conditions inside the garage in a fire event. That was in a directive of the Fire Marshal. We actually have just completed the RFQ process for that and have a pending award in place. It has been brought to our attention, though, that our fire panel will need to be upgraded in order to accommodate this type of integration, so that is going to be a subsequent procurement that we'll be working on. But we are able to move forward with the building automation system procurement that we just did that will handle that integration with the ventilation controls. Moving along, this, back in June, I believe, the FTA, it might have been May, actually. The FTA announced that they would be doing another round of 5339 capital funding, competitive funding opportunities. This is the bus and bus facility, as well as the lower no emission grant program. Those applications were due in in July. GMT submitted two applications, one against the bus and bus facility program, as well as one against the lower no emission program, as well as provided vehicle replacements to V-Trans, who did a statewide application for vehicles, which covered all the rural providers, including GMT Rural. Giving you an overview of our applications. So we we worked with our A&E team led by Weeman Lampier over the past several months to develop design materials for a comprehensive upgrade to the HVAC system at our main facility. That included the replacement of all of our makeup air units in garage and the maintenance shop, as well as rooftop units over the administrative office areas, as well as some interior upgrades to the ductwork and installation of new installation of new equipment, which will help with the zoning issues that we've had inside the building during basically the entire time I've worked here. We have hot and cold spots inside the inside the offices, which is a is an issue for staff. And so that was the primary function of the of the, that was the primary capital project in that application, but we did include other items in there that were identified in our capital needs assessment. So that includes building envelope repair and maintenance, the installation of exterior corridor improvements. That was actually not in the capital needs assessment, but that's a covered walkway over the or a cover covering over the walkway between the driver break room and the the garage and the bus garage going in front of the bus wash. So this would be a covering over that walkway, as well as replacing the concrete pad in front of the bus wash with a new new pad that integrates an ice melt system. That should improve driver safety as they're now for their new path of travel between the brake room and the garage to get their buses. The application also included replacement of the bus wash, replacement of our diesel fuel tank and pump, and repaving of our driveway. And we also included funding for passenger amenity upgrades. Those are those are eligible under the bus and bus facility program. So we proposed upgrades at nine bus stops. And we also included the replacement of three heavy-duty diesel buses and some cutaway and van replacements for vehicles that we leased to SSTAA in the Town of Essex. So the total application for the bus and bus facilities program was $4,755,647 in federal funding. We also included a scalability proposal, which eliminated or reduced some of those facility capital projects, as well as an alternative for midlife overhaul for three buses in lieu of total replacement. Our scaled proposal was $2,311,908 in federal funding. Excuse me. So in addition to that, we submitted a lower no emission application that was for cutaways, that replacement cutaways for SSTAA. We worked with, we we had some discussions with SSTAA during the lead-up to that application and decided that this would be a good opportunity for us to pilot liquefied petroleum gas cutaways in our region. That's LPG, commonly referred to as propane. So we submitted a separate application under the lower no emission program, targeting that low emission carve-out that's typically less competitive than the other funding funding sources in this grant opportunity. So that application included funding or requested funding for 12 replacement cutaways, as well as funding to cover a five-year lease for a 1,000-gallon skid system LPG fueling infrastructure. This is a more modular fueling solution, which we felt was a was a good approach, given that these vehicles are leased to a contractor. The site is not owned by GMT. So this gives us more flexibility with that, which we felt was a better approach, given the given that scenario. We also included in this site work and electrical connections for that fueling infrastructure, LPG training and project administration. So that application totaled $2,664,459 in federal funds. We also included a scale scalability proposal in that application, which reduced reduced the number of replacement buses from 12 to six. And that was, that scaled proposal was $1,035,355. Both applications were submitted by the deadline on July 4th. I'll note that we also worked with ACOM on helping us develop the application itself as feedback that we got from FTA is that the applications that are prepared by a consultant are typically more competitive than the ones that are just prepared by agency staff. So we do not have a timeline for when award notifications will take place, but we expect it to be roughly four months after the application. So likely October, November, we'll hear back on the success of those applications. I do want to take an opportunity here to highlight the efforts of Connor Smith, our capital projects manager. He worked very diligently over the past year on researching LPG technology and working with our A&E team on the development of those design materials to support the application. That work really put us in a position to be able to, A, target LPG in a manner that makes our chances of success more more plot more realistic, just being able to target that low emission carve-out and just building a more competitive proposal with a with stronger backing, demonstrating the shovel readiness, which FTA typically looks for. So I just wanted to really highlight the efforts. He really played a key role in making those strong applications. And I'm very proud of the work that was done and proud of the applications that were there. So hopefully we get some good news in a few months. I'm gonna wrap up quickly. We had one major bus stop amenity project that was installing a bus shelter at a at the new place on 165 Shelburne Road, former Champlain Inn, I believe it was called. We worked with their their team on constructing a bus pad as well during their site work project for that new for that upgrades to that facility. And that shelter was installed in April. And we've been continued, we've been continuing our work with an internal bus stop amenity group to implement our new procedure that we developed for that. And then finally, I'll close with battery electric bus purchase and infrastructure. Our FY25 activities have, in all honesty, been a lot of hurry up and wait. So we've been working with New Flyer with the status of those grants, those loan-o grants being unobligated to get pricing and proposals ready, so that we can issue a PO as soon as those grants get executed. So right now, we're, we have issued a letter of intent to New Flyer to hold our current bus production slots, which are currently in July of 2026. They did tell us that when we issue a PO, we would be able to discuss with them any opportunities to move us up in their production schedule. So we're hoping that we can issue a PO in the coming weeks, so that we can have that discussion and hopefully take advantage of any openings in their bus in their production schedule. And we're also working with them on a PO for the infrastructure portion of this project. That's once again, just waiting on the execution, the obligation of those federal grants in trams when we can issue those POs. We are working with V-Trans on getting a notice to proceed from V-Trans to GMT, so that we can issue those POs and have some assurances that we will not be on the hook for the full 1.9 million that that PO will be, should there be any issues with the federal funds. So with that, I'll just open it up to the floor for any questions about the capital projects update.
Anyone have any questions? I love the shout out to Connor, so thank you for for recognizing staff that are working really hard. It's really nice to see also how you have been really thoughtful, you and your team have been really thoughtful about building in these, you know, like just some wiggle room for whatever we can't predict. So I appreciate that.
I'll also note, it wasn't reflected in my memo, but Connor is really the person doing a lot of the boots-on-the-ground work with these. My my role is more advisory to Connor and and also making sure that we're able to complete these projects within the funding that we have. But Connor is the person who's doing the onsite inspections, the the direct work with the contractors, so. Yeah, terrific work there.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions on this part, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the capital budget adjustment.
So I will, in the interest of time, I'll keep this a high-level overview as well, but the the proposed adjustment is in the is in the board packet, so it's available there for anybody to look at. What I will talk about is the fact that we are removing a number of projects from this capital budget, because those projects are included in the slate of 5339 application that we have. So because those, because funding for those projects is uncertain at this time, we are going to remove those from the capital budget. And if we do have a successful funding award, we will propose an adjustment to the to the board to put those projects back into our FY25 capital budget. So that is lines B, D, G, H, I, M, Q, and R. So it's a 335 heavy-duty diesel buses, the replacement Essex cutaway, midlife overhaul for the heavy-duty buses, the replacement of the makeup air units, which is really a building-wide HVAC system. We had an electric bus charging infrastructure line in that, in that originally originally adopted FY26 capital budget. We're actually carrying over the electric charging infrastructure project from FY25 into FY26. So we don't need two electric bus charging infrastructure line items in FY26. So this one, the one that was in there before is really going to be our FY27 capital infrastructure project. The fuel tank replacement is also being removed. And then finally, an expansion, light-duty truck for facility maintenance. We are going to prioritize replacing a shop truck that is well past its useful life with those funds in lieu of a facility maintenance truck at this time. Then we also had a portable scissor lift for facility maintenance. That's been integrated into the loan-o equipment and tooling line. The primary purpose of that scissor lift is going to be servicing overhead dispensers that will be installed in the garage, so that would be an eligible expense for our existing loan-o grants. So it's unnecessary for it to be in its own own separate line. The removal of those line items reduces the overall capital budget by $5,566,402, as well as the local capital match from FY26 by $252,895. Significant savings there, but like I said, some of those projects may be put back into the budget if we get a successful 5339 award. We did carry, we added a number of projects that were not in the approved capital budget. First being a line item for facility improvements and a master plan study at our facility next door. That master plan study was put on hold last year while we had the A&E team focus on our 5339 application. We expect to kick off that work. Actually, we're likely to kick off that work with ACOM in the coming months. As their transit experience, we feel like would be a better fit for what our needs are with that master plan study, helping us inform how that facility can best support our operations in the overall campus, combining to the two properties there. Like I said before, we are carrying over the charging infrastructure project from FY25, so that's being added into this proposed adjustment, as well as carryforward funds from the upgrade of the fire suppression system. We have some activities on that in that scope that will be carrying over into FY26. We had some funding, we had some expenses from the design and consulting assistance for the 5339 application, because that application was in was submitted in July. We had some July expenses there. We also are, we also worked with our maintenance team on the purchase of a replacement maintenance software. That is, that occurred in July as well, so we had some funding in FY25 that's going to be carried forward into 26. That is actually utilizing some direct federal funding that we have for software. And then finally, we had a carryover balance for our office and technology support equipment, primarily a badge printer that was delivered in July, so we're carrying that funding over into FY26 to to capture those items. And any balance above and beyond that badge printer would be used to support the server replacement that we are targeting in 26. So the addition of those projects, or so with the addition of those projects, the cumulative change to the capital budget, there were some other changes that I did not highlight above, namely that we added a ITS line item and removed some other items. So the cumulative changes to the urban capital budget between what was approved back in December and what's being adjusted now is a reduction of $6,147,175 from the overall capital budget and $277,908 from the current year local capital match. Before I move on to rural, I just wanted to open it up for any questions from the board.
I just, I have a general question and then I'll offer it to others. Is, we haven't generally done this before, where we've removed items that we're waiting on a grant and then add them in when we get the, so I'm just wondering what the benefit is to doing this this way?
So one benefit, well, one is that usually when this, when we have this period of uncertainty at the beginning of the year, that's when we are working with V-Trans on what our capital program is going to look like in the state grant. So we have a little bit better idea of the likelihood of adding those projects. This is really up in the air. These are this is a competitive grant that we really have no idea whether we're going to get. So that's that's the reason. The other reason is that because of the financial situation that we're in in FY26, freeing up these local dollars from the FY26 operating budget gives Nick a better picture of how he can balance the operating budget. My discussion with Nick and Clayton is that if we do get a successful award, one, there is an opportunity to revise the operating budget to free up some local dollars in FY26 to support those projects. But we also have a sizable local capital match fund balance that can be used to match those funds. So it it's, the benefit here is that it it brings the capital budget down to a size that we are very likely to spend in 26. And it gives us a better, it paints a better picture of what kind of local funds we need from the operating budget to support this capital budget. And then we we, but still leaving the opportunity for us to program these additional capital projects with other local match sources to to use for matching federal, matching funds to those federal dollars.
Thanks. I think what I heard is there will still be matching dollars available should we get the grant and we need these. Okay.
Yes, there will be.
Okay, other questions? And I'm not seeing any, but as we go into the rural portion of this, if you could just touch on just how we're balancing rural investment with rural transfer, that would be helpful.
Yes, okay. In the interest of time, I'm gonna speed through rural, because there are, there are less changes with rural. So we had LPG cutaways, a medium-duty gas cutaway, and a conversion van for cider in the in the original capital budget. Those are being removed. And as, those are really part of the, part of the 5339 application with V-Trans. We're also not doing the LPG cutaway. So that's an area that this ties into the rural transfer. We did talk to Jim Moulton at TBT. He was not interested in having a small number of LPG cutaways, so we use gas in that in that, in the application. And then we also are including some carryforward lines. We have a cutaway for, added added lines, a cutaway for $160,000, as well as some carryforward. We have two replacement EV Ford Transit vans, carbon reduction funds, which will be used for EV EV Ford Transit vans, as well as carbon reduction funds for EV transit infrastructure. So the cumulative changes there are a reduction of $734,665 from the overall capital budget and $210,315 from the current year local capital match. And so balancing transfer, we're working with TBT. we're working with TVT on the type of buses that they want to service or that they want to utilize in that area. Um, we are keeping some facility maintenance or facility PM funding, actually a pretty sizable amount there so that we can uh, tackle some deferred maintenance items at that Berlin facility. Uh, we also have a line item in there to continue the property search um, in the Berlin area for a new facility. Um, uh, which we will work with TVT um, on those efforts in the coming, over the coming year. Uh, I don't know if that really answers your question, Amy. I mean, I I think we're balancing this and that we're, we're really tackling immediate needs, but also um, forecasting the transfer in our decision-making uh, with these capital lines. Uh, there, Vtrans is going to provide us with some funding uh, for the transition efforts, but I'm not sure if those are intend tended to be capital funding or operating. So uh, that's, yeah, that's, that's where we're at uh, right now as far as transfer and how that uh, plays in.
Thanks. I think Dan wants to provide an answer to that question.
Yes, the answer is all the above, both operations, capital and planning as well uh, funds for the rural transfer, and that is at eighty-twenty a fed uh, state. So we're not looking for any local match on those transfer costs.
Thanks.
So when uh, that will all be put programmed in an amendment, if uh, a subsequent adjustment is needed to the capital budget, we will bring that before the board. And uh, finally, I'll close with a a capital purchase approval that we're looking for as part of this uh, approval. Uh, we are requesting that uh, Clayton be authorized to execute purchase orders for vehicles listed in both the urban and rural capital budget, which are able to be purchased uh, through an active contract with the VPTA, Vermont Public Transportation Association uh, within the budget limits in the adjusted FY twenty-six capital budget. Looks like Chapin has a question.
Matt or Paul, do you just want to talk about the finance committee review and recommendation?
I was going to note that I I neglected to put that in the memo, uh, but this was presented to the finance committee uh, uh, the meeting last Thursday. Uh, the finance com- committee uh, voted to uh, recommend this budget for approval by the board. In the memo, there is a uh, requested uh, motion, which I'll read off uh, to you right now. Uh, staff is recommending approval from the GMT Board of Commissioners to amend the FY twenty-six capital budget to incorporate the changes in the proposed FY twenty-six capital budget adjustment enclosed with the memo and to authorize the general manager to enter into agreements for vehicle purchases as outlined above.
Thank you for the presentation and the discussion, and Paul, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to make that motion.
Okay, anybody have any questions before Paul jumps in? Not seeing any, go for it, Paul.
I just want to move the motion that uh, that Matt just read and the, the finance committee did recommend that this be adopted by the board.
Paul, I can, I can share my screen if if we need to, if you, if Paul needs to read that motion as read, I can, no, okay, good.
Uh, second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Susan. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thanks, Matt, for all the work and thanks for the finance committee for giving it a review for us. It's really helpful. All right, we are going to move along um, to Clayton's uh, discussion of the roadmap, which, by the way, I really appreciate. It's really very helpful. Um, but to discuss what the next year um, ahead could look like.
So, thank you very much, Amy, and uh, thank you, Matt, for the great presentation and uh, the board for approving our, our capital budget adjustment. And so um, uh, what I had sent in the read ahead yesterday, and I will pull up um, for a share screen, is sort of four temporary projects um, that are going to be dominating uh, our board time in the uh, in the coming uh, months. And um, and so the thing that I wanted to make sure that folks, you know, know is that in addition to all of our normal, you know, establishing a fiscal year twenty-seven budget and and the, the normal tasks that we go through every year, these are going to be sort of an addition to. And um, and, and in it, one of the purposes of talking to you about this today is so that you can see, hey, this is sort of the timing for these, you know, big uh, projects. Uh, but also to get your input on how do we want to tackle them. And uh, and so last year, when we saw that we were in a similar situation that we had more work than we were going to be able to do in our monthly two-hour meetings, uh, we chose to have meetings essentially every two weeks um, through most of the fall, and uh, that got us into a good rhythm. Uh, we got a lot of work done, but I know from talking to folks that, you know, that was a lot bigger ask. And so after we look at this, uh, I'm going to be coming back uh, in a few minutes and saying, hey, does it, you know, from your preference, uh, would fe- folks like frequent short meetings or, you know, monthly longer meetings? So looking at the, the projects, uh, obviously, we're going to be going through another round of service reductions. We have the rural transfer that we're talking about. Uh, but we're also going to be looking at uh, our statute and um, thinking about ways that it would need to be adjusted. Um, and we have assessment reform, and in a few minutes, we're going to be hearing from uh, from our partners with the assessment reform. And so what this uh, document lays out, and because of our limited time, I'm not really going to be able to walk through, you know, every portion of it. But it lays out the tasks uh, that the board uh, will need to be doing each uh, month and some of the related uh, activities that staff will be doing uh, outside of those meetings. And so what I do think that uh, I want to do, uh, because uh, you know, the service reductions, I think, is going to be what's going to get the most attention is I'm going to go through the, the timing of, of that. And so um, starting with next uh, meeting, uh, we're going to be having some discussions about service prioritization. This will be very similar to the discussions that we had last year before we went through a service reduction exercise. We're going to see if uh, if anyone's um, you know, feelings have changed. Um, and uh, and this will help guide um, um, this will help guide uh, the board, or not the board, the staff into uh, developing something for the board. And so we're going to be giving you a survey um, that you all will complete uh, outside of the meeting. Looking into October, um, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to continue that discussion. We'll look at the survey results. Um, but very importantly, we're going to look at what reductions we've um, uh, what the reductions we've already made have saved us, because as you may recall, last year, we were making best guesses for how much money we would, would be saved. Um, now we'll actually know what the actual savings are. My hope is, is that we'll find that the savings was greater than expected and that that will be, you know, mean that we, there will be less for us uh, to have to reduce. The other thing that we're going to want to do is look at um, how our stick factors, um, you know, will be impacted from changes, because one of the things that we need to make sure is that we don't um, lose a stick factor uh, because of these reductions. Uh, I will say that I'm very happy to report, even though I don't like less service, because we focused on our least efficient service with our reductions, we actually are more competitive for our stick factors now than we were last year. And so uh, um, but I don't think that that will be the case with further reductions because most of our service now, or I'd say pretty much all of our service moving forward, is productive service. And then lastly, in October, and this is where we're probably going to need uh, help from uh, Dan and Ross at uh, Vtrans, is that this is one we're going to say, hey, this is the target that we need to uh, come up with for savings. And the reason why we're going to want to hear from Vtrans is because, you know, they're developing their budget for fiscal year twenty-seven. We know that it won't come out until January, but they're going to be able to, you know, probably provide us some, you know, guestimates for what they would be able to provide. And what we'll then need to decide is if we want to adjust our uh, reduction target based on uh, based on that feedback from them. Then in November, um, just before Thanksgiving, to ruin everybody's holidays, uh, we will uh, put out uh, our potential service reduction plan and we'll initiate uh, public meetings. And we'll start those meetings immediately after um, the uh, um, the board meeting authorizes uh, us to do that at the meeting and will uh, continue to have those meetings uh, throughout December. Then in January, we're going to take a look at the public comments. We're going to do an update of our financials. Um, we're going to uh, give you an opportunity to kind of refine your guidance to us uh, so that come February, uh, we will have a prioritized uh, list of potential reductions. Then at our March meeting, the transportation bill, uh, the draft tra- transportation bill uh, should be out. That will give us um, an idea of uh, my expectation is, which uh, we can discuss whether this is a, 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 a good approach, is that we will get at least what is in the draft bill. It seems that the trend is, is that what comes out in the draft bill will be um, you know, sort of the minimum we will achieve and then there's the possibility that that will, you know, uh, increase as it goes through the process. So I believe that that will give us the information necessary to um, actually uh, approve um, uh, wh- what needs to be done based on the funding. And then in May, we would finalize those things, um, you know, based on what the actual T-bill is. And those reductions would be implemented in June and August. And I will say, you know, one of the things that um, is going to be a bit different this year is that last year, we understood that some of our routes were underperforming. Vtrans, you know, identified uh, routes that were not meeting uh, the standards and their performa- uh, uh, transit performance report. Um, and, you know, some of our service for good business practices needed to be adjusted. Um, moving into next year, you know, I feel that all the transit that we're providing is good transit and, you know, my perspective going into the session is I'm going to try to preserve all of our transit. Um, and so um, I do want to make sure that the board knows that um, I am not just going to be approaching this as service reductions are acceptable. You know, I'm going to be approaching this as we want to limit the service reductions as much as possible and preferably have none. But in case I fail, um, we need to have this process uh, so that um, so that we can reduce uh, our um, spending uh, or reduce our service and, 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 and a, a way that makes sense. I do also want to look a little bit at the rural transfer. And so um, at the retreat, we heard very much uh, about folks wanting to be able to provide input. And so what um, my expectation is in September is that we'll start uh, talking about a position that the board will take. Um, this will first off do the, you know, the, the obvious thing is just, you know, notifying uh, folks that based on TVT and RCT's plans to um, to take over their service, that we won't be submitting a grant application next year. Um, we would then set out some uh, conditions for uh, what would need to happen if, say, the rural transfer were delayed or if for whatever reason the rural transfer ends up not happening uh, for us to submit the grant application. And then this is um, next would be those items that the board uh, wants to recommend to RCT, TVT and Vtrans uh, uh, for the transfer. And so we'll start that work in September. Um, and then we will finalize the uh, I'll provide a draft recommendation in October. And then in November, uh, we would end up approving that uh, uh, that position paper. So that'd give us three chances to, to discuss. Going back to September, I wanted to let you all know that one of the things that I'll be working on outside of the meeting is, is working with Vtrans um, to make sure that we fully understand what our local match expectations will be when it comes to the linked service moving forward. And uh, and uh, and uh, whether we need to start working with Franklin and Washington County municipalities on uh, getting them to contribute a local match for those services. The, after we provide the position in November, at least when it comes to rural uh, transfer, it's mo- it's really too fluid for me to project what we'll need to be doing uh, you know, beyond then. And so that's why it's just TBD here. I would not expect that this means that there will be nothing to do. I expect that there will be lots to do. It's just that I'm not sure that we can, you know, guess what those things are yet. I do know that um, we talked during the uh, retreat about uh, establishing milestones uh, so that uh, you know, we know how the progress is working on the transition and that the uh, transition committees um, uh, now that they are meeting, will be working on those milestones. And so uh, when we have those, uh, we'll be, I'll be sharing those with you, and I think that that will help populate the rest of that column. When it comes to the legislative work, um, really my emphasis uh, to the group is, is that I'm going to be using the leadership committee um, sort of as the sounding board for a lot of this. And um, and the thing that I want to, to let folks know, and I don't mean this to be in a, you know, snarky or um, uh, a well, in a snarky way, is that by the end of November, we have to have a legislative plan. And so I'm going to be working with um, with the leadership committee. I'm going to be working to keep you all informed of what the leadership committee is, is working on. But I just need to make sure that folks understand that when we come to this uh, meeting in November, we will need to approve something. Um, if you don't approve something, then um, it'd just be an opportunity for me to run amok with no guidance. And man, you don't want that, because who knows what I will come up with. And so uh, and so I just want to make sure that there's not a November surprise. You know, that people know that in November um, uh, that we're going to be asking folks to, to weigh in and asking folks to trust the leadership committee um, uh, in that process. And then lastly, as we're going to hear in a few moments, so I won't spend too much time on it, um, is uh, the assessment reform. Um, here, what the board is going to be doing is receiving information in the coming months. Uh, we'll be incorporating that information into uh, some of our work, uh, such as potentially if, if one of the recommendations would be a, a tweak to statute. And uh, but as far as the board's work, a lot of that's going to happen in the spring when we have to start selling our new assessment uh, methodology. And so unlike the service reductions, which, you know, the work is kind of happening in the, and the bulk of the work is happening in the fall and then will decrease in the spring, this will sort of ramp up for us uh, in the spring. And so I'm going to stop sharing and uh, um, come back to folks to ask for questions. And then after questions, I'm going to ask folks, um, you know, what their sort of desire is uh, when it comes to moving forward with meetings. Do we want to follow last year's model with uh, you know, more frequent meetings? Or do we want to keep it to monthly with a longer meeting? And so first off, any, any questions at all about the roadmap? Tasha?
Thanks so much, Clayton. Um, I, I just was wondering if we could add um, a topic to the, the rural transfer, which is issues come up that GMT is a municipality and subject to open meeting law. And these services are being transferred to entities that are not subject to that. And I, I just thought um, the board should have a discussion whether or not we have thoughts about that. Thank you.
I think that uh, you're absolutely right, and Tasha, that was something that I know that you had a conflict and weren't able to attend the retreat, but that specific topic was uh, brought up during the retreat. And I suspect that our memo with recommendations uh, will be that um, you know, that RCT and TVT um, continue to operate in the transparent way that GMT has uh, in service in Franklin, uh, Grand Isle, Washington and the Royal Counties. Uh, we'll go to Paul and then Chapin.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just two, two questions. Uh, Clayton, you know, one is you, you talk, you talk about um, the le- you know, the legislative changes. Are you talking about our, our, our charter specifically?
Yes, and so the, the, the part of statute that uh, lays out our author, uh, authority and uh, covers things like whose members and if we can bond and all of that, yes.
And the second uh, question is, with all the uh, folks that are involved in the rural transfer process, are you comfortable that there's somebody that's in, in charge will keep moving this thing uh, forward? I mean, a, a committee without a head uh, often doesn't go anywhere.
Well, that's a great point, and, and I'm actually going to ask Catherine, do you want to relay your experience from the FGI meeting, or would you like me to?
I'm happy to. I asked a simple question about that of who is in charge of, for example, making a decision of what happens to the Richford to St. Albans route. And we got this. And we got, it's me, no, it's them. Nobody is willing to take accountability or responsibility for being the one in charge. And everybody had a different answer as to who was the ultimate decision maker on specific items. With that, is that your, your fair description, Clayton?
You know, I, I think that what we heard to that, as we heard from V Trans, that hey, our role is to review the grant applications and to, you know, determine what is the, you know, appropriate, you know, funding, you know, for these services. And we heard from RCT that, you know, that their responsibility is to prepare a grant application and, you know, to go through that process. And and what it means is, is that we have these processes that have been established that don't really contemplate a rural transfer like this. And so we don't have, you know, you know, a transfer czar, you know, sort of in either location. And I'm not and it would be tricky about who that would be. And in, in some ways, I would say that, you know, probably, you know, V Trans as the funder of rural transit, you know, should probably be, you know, I would see being more forward in the decision-making on how things would go. But Dan is probably also thinking, well, Clayton, we know that you resist everything that you, that we want you to do. So we don't want conflict for the next year. But, but I think that, you know, Paul, you're bringing up a point that, that it's going to, you know, that right now it feels like we have a committee where we're all working and we're working together, but there's not, you know, like a single person who's in charge.
Is there a place for you, Clayton, even though you may not call yourself the, the transfer czar? That sort of below the surface, you keep poking away at the items that need to be poked at so that we make sure that they're dealt with?
You know, I, I'm going to say two things to that. Certainly I'm trying to keep my finger on the pulse and being at these meetings and seeing what's happened. But I also want to recognize as much as I'm going to try to be a neutral arbiter, I also have to make sure that I'm looking out for the organization that's going to remain, which is urban. And, and so there may be moments where what I feel is best for GMT Urban may be in conflict with what Catherine or Christian or, you know, Bob feel is best for, for there. And so I think that, you know, that's something I can try to do, but it's, you know, I think that we need to recognize that, you know, I'm going to have an urban bias because that's what's going to be, you know, part of my diminished empire a year from now.
If I could just jump in quickly, who's running the meetings now?
So Stephen Fabel is facilitating the meetings, but he's not a decider for the meetings. So he's, you know, doing that type of, you know, coordination work.
Right. But is he, is he setting the agenda for the meetings?
Yes. And at least in FGI, I would say that for TVT, they've already had a transfer committee that Stephen is participating in and that the TVT committee, which is an offset of their board, is, is really sort of taking on that role.
So does, does everybody have an opportunity to suggest items for the agenda?
I have not been to one of the TVT meetings yet, so I do not actually know that. And, but I do know for the FGI meetings that there was not an issue with telling Stephen what we wanted to have on the agenda.
I'm just wondering if these decisions can be made in the context of these meetings through consensus or some format.
And I, I want to recognize to get to Chapin. I think that Dan is going to have some relevant, you know, input here, but also know that we're about 10 minutes behind schedule and we have our assessment reform. Yep.
I defer to Dan, Amy, for a moment to help.
Yeah, thanks, Chapin. I'm, B Trans' only comment here is that we would welcome this ongoing conversation to figure out how best you would want us to make these decisions. Do you want it to be from V Trans? Because we're happy to do that. We also don't want to step on your toes as the operator of these services. And so that's why you sort of got that wishy-washy answer during the FGI meeting. For the TVT meetings, it is TVT though, right? And so I know you haven't seen those meetings, but it's really Tri Valley Transit leading it. They are doing a lot of assessment work. They're relying on Stephen to provide the data and allowing that committee to make the decisions. And that's, sounds like that needs to be something maybe FGI needs to consider with RCT. But there again, but let's have this conversation. I'll bring it up with Stephen and Ross tomorrow when they're both back and available from their vacations. Thanks.
Thank you. Chapin.
Yes, just a quick kudos framing of all this, Clayton, and our next, these four major items is really helpful to get the board thinking about this and reflecting kind of the heavy work ahead and the role transfer conversation has been really helpful. On the, on the legislative front, yes, I see this funding cut scenario that will have the service reductions being an effective tool to really mobilizing public support, hopefully for GMT and saying, we can't survive this next round of cuts, which are much more substantive. The previous cuts have been for underperforming service. We're now going to be cutting bone. And so that's going to be clear and hopefully helpful. In addition, I feel very strongly that we need a positive vision for transit when we're going to legislature with an agenda. And one of the items I don't see on this list is the time and space needed for our position of our value statement. If the state wants housing, if we want economic development, if we want compact village centers, we are a tool for your success. And I think we need some time, unfortunately, in addition to these four items, to figure out what our clear concise elevator pitch is for our future investment so that we don't just go to the legislature with a sky is falling sales pitch.
I, I think that you're absolutely right, Chapin, and I take that feedback that's well received, that that is missing with this outline. How would you feel about knowing the time constraints that we have? You know, this is something that I would think that we would probably want to develop with the leadership committee. And, and the hopes that we would then be able to have this vision ready for November as well. But then that will also mean that the leadership committee will be looking at additional meetings as well, too.
I'm happy to participate wherever it would be helpful for building that vision statement.
And I think we can tie that back to the work that's been done kind of on that visioning, it's not visioning, strategic planning kind of conversation that's been happening. If we could kind of tie those all back together and move them forward, I think. I agree with what Chapin's saying and, you know, I'll do whatever. This is a really kind of pivotal moment. And I also want to recognize that we got to move forward on our conversation on our agenda today. So if there's not anything pressing more on this, we'll keep seeing it. Go ahead, Clayton. Were you going to add? Oh, sorry, Alona.
Sorry. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to add, it would be helpful if we could get more data on the website again. Maybe I was poking around in the wrong places, but I do think that understanding our ridership and how successful we are is a really important part of the story.
You know, I think that I've already been working on my January presentations to the legislature. And I'm going to be borrowing from Dickens. It's the best of times, it's the worst of times. From the best of times, there are very few transit agencies that move as many people per capita as GMT. Man, we do awesome compared to other places. But then we have this struggle, you know, that we have with our finances and with our, with our management. So I think you're absolutely right, Alona. And the only thing that I just wanted to, to just say, so if we were to follow the path of last year where we were to meet twice a month, you know, probably starting in October, you know, how would people feel about that? Or would they rather have a four hour meeting once a month?
I'm going to say for me, four hours is a really long time. Two hours every other week worked well for us last year. We were, in fact, I think one of the things that helps to do is keep the momentum going. So there's less backgrounded every time. We're not losing the information. At least my brain works better that way. And if we could do it for a temporary period of time to get us kind of through this crunch, I think it's kind of important and doable. That's my opinion. I'm seeing thumbs up. Chapin, is your hand up? Are you? Okay, thumbs up, thumbs up. Any giant thumbs down? Okay. Henry, I'm thinking your thumbs up is a thumbs up, not a thumbs up to the thumbs down, but that is how my brain works.
Thumbs up is a thumbs up, yeah.
So let's do, let's choose our window and do every other week to get us through this really, really important time. And, and that's going to mean on top of those rural transfer meetings for our rural commissioners and myself, which I'm not on those, I haven't gotten those invitations yet. I'll figure that out. Yeah, but the, the pre-thought in this roadmap is really helpful. And in, in my experience for the past couple of years, as we've been having those major decisions to make, it helps that we discuss them multiple times before we actually have to make that decision. So I think those conversations move better.
Thank you so much, everybody. Sorry it took longer than expected, especially sorry to Peter, Michelle and Jill, who I told yesterday that, you know, oh, man, we're going to have you on early. And so, so thank you for hanging around with us.
Why don't we toss it right over to talk about the urban assessment reform?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Great to see you. And Clayton, no problem. We're all early risers, I think. So, yeah, we would like to kind of bring you up to date on where we are with this work and give you a chance to hear what we're finding so far and get your feedback on that this morning. You know, we've scheduled about 20, 30 minutes for this. We would like to do a screen share, which Michelle, my colleague, do you want to share the, the screen? So we're going to use, in addition to showing you and talking about what we're finding to date, we're also going to use a tool called Mural, which is an online kind of interactive discussion facilitation tool. I also want to mention from our team from AECOM, Jill Cahoon is also on the line and she'll be talking a little later about some of the other aspects of this work we're doing. So let's start off, and also I just want to say thank you to those on the call that we've already met with, who gave us their time and insights. Really appreciate it. And there'll be other opportunities as we move forward with this study. So just to bring us all up to speed, we have spent the last month, month and a half or so sitting down with either the, sort of the government administration people, meaning town managers and staff as well as elected officials and select board members from all of the GMT urban communities. We just last night met with the Milton Select Board. We have just a few more communities to do in the next few weeks, including Essex Junction, Williston and the Town of Essex. And that will more or less wrap up all the scheduled meetings and interviews that we have for this element of the process. And we've been meeting with all these folks to get a better understanding of their individual and collective perspectives on GMT's current urban assessment funding approach and model as well as thoughts, ideas, suggestions related to improvements and changes that potentially could make GMT's funding situation more stable, more, you know, equitable and set a foundation for potential growth of service and and activity down the road. So that said, we have basically four overall thematic findings at this point. And this is again from around 20 interviews and meetings to date. One, and I'm guessing most of these are really going to be no big surprise to anyone. One is that GMT's current funding model overall, including the urban assessment, that reform of that is urgent, that it is not working in terms of sustainability. And it needs to be addressed as soon as possible and probably a long time ago, frankly. To get more down in a little bit of details, we've heard from lots of folks, lots of stakeholders that the current system is viewed as fragile. It's viewed as opaque, meaning most of the comments we've heard related to the, the urban assess, the urban assessment model is that very few understand how the numbers are arrived at. And that is seen as sort of a, a major obstacle to moving forward and being there being, you know, willingness to further invest in GMT. And with that said, there's a broad viewpoint that we need a more diversified and sustainable regional funding model. Related to that, secondly, we're hearing a lot about how do we shift from a kind of a, of the viewpoint of a transactional approach that, that certainly some municipalities have with regard to transit service to more of a regional investment mindset. And this certainly relates back to what Chapin was saying a little bit earlier about the value of transit, communicating that. And so again, what we're hearing is that there needs to be a way forward that reframes transit regionally as a shared infrastructure that benefits everyone in the region, whether they ride transit or not. And, you know, working through education and lobbying and so forth to build broader public and policymaker support for, you know, again, about the, with a focus on the value of transit to everyone. We've heard quite a bit about the quality and amount of service, the flexibility of transit service. And, you know, as housing development takes hold in the region, for example, with the CHIP Act and so forth, how do we do a better job of integrating transit planning, transit operations with development patterns? And, you know, that relates to things like improving frequencies, reliability and aligning with or adapting to growth areas. And then the fourth area that we're, we're hearing quite a bit about has to do with GMT's governance and partnership and that there are, there are gaps or incomplete elements seen there. A number of folks have talked about expanding the board to include either more elected officials or non-governmental institutions that are major players or partners in transit and strengthening partnerships to boost alignment with transit needs and, and to boost support. So very briefly, again, those are sort of the four key thematic areas that we are hearing quite a bit about. And at this point, I'm going to turn it to my colleague, Michelle, who's going to lead us in a bit of a discussion of your thoughts on what we've just, we've provided here today and other thoughts you may have. And then we'll, we'll have Jill talk for a moment about some of the other work we're doing on this. And then where are we going next? Michelle?
Thanks, Peter. So this is an interesting application mural. So I'm, I'm actually going to be taking notes as I hear them in these little sticky areas. I, we find that it promotes engagement and lets you kind of synthesize and read words and think about the things that are said. I, we find that it promotes engagement and lets you kind of synthesize and read words and think about the things that are said versus looking at talking heads all the time. I think that's the challenge with online larger group format. So we're going to shift a little bit. You're just going to see a little bit of movement. But like Peter said, you know, he's interviewed a lot of you and had one-on-one discussions collectively. We're looking for kind of some reflection and some reaction to these thematic areas and anything that's specific that's come up for you as you're contemplating the feedback that we're receiving. So I'll open that up for folks. And I'm not watching, I can only have a limited view of the, the group. So it's, it's good for someone, I think Peter, if you can watch, hands up or... Thanks.
Yeah, so chime in, folks. Any, any immediate thoughts or feedback? Paul?
Yeah, looking at this issue of funding model, I mean, we've been talking about this as long as I can remember. And even though my memory is not that great, I can remember it, been a long time. Clayton put forward a proposal to move towards a regional sales tax. And it's interesting because Essex has no no sales tax. So it's, it's, as a representative from Essex, it's going to be interesting going forward, talking about, about this. But I guess my real question to you is, are you moving the idea of a regional sales tax forward as you're having these discussions? And is that kind of the basis where we're, we're going now, we're moving on the regional sales tax? And, and that's, that's the, the only dog we have in this fight?
So I think I would probably want to answer the question for Paul. And so Paul, when you look at the roadmap, you'll see that part of the work in September and October is for staff and me, you know, to be working with municipalities about funding sources. And that's exactly what I'm going to be talking to them about, is to seeing what the appetite is for that. You know, we certainly have heard mixed feelings about, about that. And so I, I'm not sure that it would be the only thing that we'll be looking at, but certainly will be. I, I, I will see my role as, as reaching out to municipalities on that. Because also, at the, at the end of the day, what reframe is going to be working for us is, you know, like a funding formula for assessments. And, and, and so that there will be, you know, both the where the money comes from, but how do we, how do we come up with a, a system that then fairly assesses each of our members? And so I'll probably be taking more of the lead on some of the political, you know, hey, does there appetite for sales tax?
I guess Clayton, the problem I have with that is we've been talking about what, what, what could we use as a basis to fund greenbound transit? And we have not come up with anything. So it seems all year between the regional sales tax, which some people won't like, but maybe is only alternative, or the assessments will have to increase enough so that we can operate in the black. And so that means increasing property tax. So I don't know what other choices we have, but you know, we're, we keep, we keep talking about some funding source, but there ain't no magic.
Agreed, Paul. And let me just add to what Clayton said just for a second here. And in a few minutes, Jill from AECom is going to talk about some of the other work we're doing that will kind of inform our ultimate recommendations of looking at peer systems around the country. But going back to the, the current assessment model or assessment system, one very common thread throughout almost all the discussions is the opaqueness, if you will, of the calculation. And that most, the municipalities essentially, you know, they get a bill and say, here, pay this. And, you know, different municipalities, I think, view it differently. But again, what we've heard is that it would be really helpful for us to understand how these numbers are arrived at and, you know, what it, you know, what, how it relates to this services, the service and ridership in our municipality and so forth. And that's something that, you know, I think is going to be key in whatever we come up with.
Austin?
Yeah, sorry, Cameron, say, I think, you know, when we talk about expanding inclusion in the conversations that we have and the funding solutions and to extent possible under our charter, the, you know, the decision-making, you know, I, I come back to our proposal to open or create a nonprofit arm, which I think would be a great opportunity to have a place for some of these, these individuals that were talked about who should be, you know, have a place in the process. Was that discussed more in this process? Was that, would you get feedback from folks in this process? And Clayton, we had a status update on that.
So unfortunately, our nonprofit is not yet legal. I have some assurances from our lawyer, Ed, that that should be solved in the coming weeks. Meaning that the IRS has not established our 501(c)(3). We are registered with the Secretary of State.
Have we begun the work to set up the bylaws for that c3? I don't necessarily know if we need IRS approval just to get the work running on that and identifying regional partners who would best have a seat on it and what voices we'd want at the table?
My, my plan is, is that the Vermont Community Foundation has a nonprofit starter fund to, that provides small grants to help do that work. And that as soon as we have our 501(c)(3), we would make that request to them to do that. And, and, and part of the challenge just is, is our continual discussion about staff capacity, because you know, absolutely, this is something I would have loved to have been done doing last year at this time.
Yeah, understand. Peter, was this something that came up in your interviews and conversations?
I think, other than you, Austin, I don't think anyone has mentioned it. And it's not meant to devalue it as a, as an avenue forward. But it, you know, it strikes me as maybe an important piece of the puzzle, but not the overall puzzle.
Alona?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think for South Burlington, service quality, flexibility and integration with development is really key to how we see a successful transit service that grows with our community and the region. And that's really fundamental for us. You know, obviously, the funding model is sort of why we're having this conversation and why we're so excited to engage with you on it. I did want to mention that what, one of the things that we are participating with other communities on is and through CCRPC is the many municipal corporations that are assessing our communities and ensuring that all of them have a clear assessment process that's easy for our leadership to understand and follow and to explain to our residents or other folks that may be paying those assessments. And so it would be just encouraging, and then we did when we talked to Peter, also just to encourage participation in those conversations as well. Because if they could all be aligned or all use a similar or the same formula, I think that would be easier for our community to get behind. And then I also, I was surprised by number four. So that, for me, that was out of the blue. I, you know, I think that there, I can see us moving towards a more efficient governance model in the future. And, and not that more voices shouldn't be heard, but just understanding how to effectively, how to have an effective board, I think is going to be an important part of having a strong organization, a strong and sustainable organization moving forward, so.
I want to, can I just pause for a second? We're running late, and we do have to vote on our collective bargaining agreement. So I'm wondering if there are folks who have to, board members who have to jump off and want to know if we will be losing quorum at any time. So if you have to jump off or if you have a hard stop at or before 9:30, could you chime in right now? So we know if we need to switch gears? Okay.
Amy, I would also just say very quickly, if, if you do want to pull this discussion to a close quickly here, we can certainly say, you know, ask Clayton to help us and give you all, you know, a week to send us additional notes or thoughts or anything on this. I mean, this, we're, we're not, the study has a ways to go, so this is not like something that, that's drop dead today or never. But I also do want to leave a, a minute or two for Jill from AECom to also talk about some of the other aspects of this study we're doing as well. So I'll leave it to you to decide.
Okay. I think Catherine is popping off in about 10, and Chapin said he had a hard stop at 9:45. So we have a little bit of space before we lose quorum. So I'd like to, you know, let Susan ask her question, and then we'll move to that, that presentation that you talked about. But if we could really just move things more quickly, and sorry, and thank you.
No problem. So someone had a, another question?
Yeah. So just really quickly, I know this comment has been made before, but I think it's really important that we are aware that as we're talking about the funding model with our partners, that the number three, the service quality issue and the vision that we were talking about earlier, they're, they're so tightly connected to each other. And I just think we can't really talk much about number one without making sure that we have a, a vision for number three that we can incorporate into those conversations. So I think that's just a really important point that we can't let go of. Otherwise, I think these thematic areas are spot on. I also thought Alona's comment about number four was good, really thinking more about effective governance as opposed to just thinking about expanded governance. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you all, you know, as, as I said, we can, you know, Clayton can work with you to get us more feedback on this, but we're going to continue going. As I said, we have a, a few more meetings in our, in our list to complete and by an early September timeframe. Jill, are you prepared to just spend a minute talking about the other aspects of this we're working on?
Sure, yeah. Thanks for having us, everyone. Great to see you all. So we are, in addition to the work that we're, we're doing to collect the, to conduct the interviews and collect information, we're also doing a peer review, more technical analysis, where we're looking at different funding methodologies across peer, peer regions and other peer agencies across the country. There are a lot of different methodologies for calculating assessments. Some are equity-related, population-related, land use-related, level of service-related, some are more flexible for growth, some are more standardized. So there's a whole range of options that are out there methodologically for calculating assessments. And I think that we, we've even heard it a few times today in the conversation that having a, an explainable, easy to understand and transparent approach to the calculation of, of the assessment is, is very, very important. So we're, we're looking into those options, and then we'll bring them forward as part of this work to present to, to all of you as we, as, as options, a menu of options as we, as we move forward.
Great, thank you, Jill. Okay, well, unless there are any other questions, as I mentioned, we're, we're coming close to the end of our first phase of the study, which is the interviews and discussions. And we're hoping that sometime in a, a late September timeframe, we can come back to, you know, the, the stakeholders and municipalities as a whole, maybe even bring folks together at the RPC or, or some such setting to present kind of what we've heard, what we're thinking in terms of potential strategic recommendations going forward, and get your, your feedback at that point. The overall recommendations and strategic roadmap, the plan right now is for a mid to late October delivery to Clayton. And as he mentioned in his earlier roadmap, the, the final, final, final version of the study would be towards the end of the year. So that is where we are. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. And sorry to, to rush you along. I apologize. Such is life.
Yes. All right. Well, I guess we're going to jump off now, let you talk about more serious matters.
Thank you. This is very serious. It's all serious. But thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for the work that you're doing. And I'm going to move us along. We adjusted our agenda to talk about the ADA fare collection at this time. So Clayton, I'm going to toss it to you, please.
Sure. And so folks may recall that in July, we passed a motion that would make fares required on SSTAA, just like STAA's paratransit service, just like it is for our fixed route. We talked about erasing past balances. But when we, but when we made that motion, we were not aware that the amount of the past balances was a full $30,000. And so I asked the finance committee to chew on this at their meeting last week. And what their recommendation was, and I'll let Paul add more to it, if, if there's anything that I missed out, because I actually missed that meeting, was that essentially that we, instead of just writing off that $30,000, that we would make a good faith effort to ask people to pay their overdue balance. We wouldn't prevent people from riding in, in the sense that we wouldn't say, hey, if you have an overdue balance, you can't ride. But we would at least send them a letter saying, hey, could you, you know, pay your past balance? And so, so what I have included in the packet is a new possible motion that would expand upon the, the motion that passed in July. And so I can read that now, and, and then we can have a discussion. So I moved to rescind the motion that passed at the July meeting on this topic and replace it with the following. SSTAA will discontinue, discontinue the practice of providing rides without payment. GMT will make a good faith effort via mail to collect past due fare balances by asking riders with overdue balances to pay. Riders with an existing overdue balance will not be prevented from using SSTAA service once fares for current service are required. This change in practice will not go into effect until a technology solution is in place to collect fares via credit debit card, and riders have been given at least 30 days' notice of the change. And so really, it's just an addition, a little more clarity than the July motion on some aspects, but the only real big change is just that we would send up essentially a beg letter to those folks who have a, a past due balance encouraging the pay up. I, I will say that I'm not overly hopeful that this will result in, you know, a complete filling of that $30,000. But anything that we would be able to receive, I think, would be better than nothing. And, and so, Paul, is there anything that you would want to add?
Well, I think the only question that people may want to consider is that if we can't collect it all, do we share that liability with SSTAA? I mean, there's some, some, some liability on, on, on both organizations not to have collected that money all along.
I, I will say that SSTAA did operate with a profit last year and $50,000, at, at least from the paratransit program. Usually we have to adjust at the end of the year because they were running short this year. It's, they, they're running a little positive. It's they they're running a little positive. Um, I'm sure SSTAA would not agree, but I sort of feel that if those funds needed to be eaten um that it would come first from that uh uh profit to the program that we paid them to operate.
Okay. Catherine, I think the motion was yours in July. Do you have anything that you want to add or say before you have to hop off?
Uh, I'll just say that I think this is a perfectly great evolution of the original decision by the board.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Well, before you before you do, and I realized you just did, um, do we have to put anything in the motion to talk about how the organizations share in that?
I I would hesitate to that because I I think that that may be something that we have to negotiate a little bit with with SSTAA on and I don't want to make it seem like here's an ultimatum.
All right. All right. So I think Catherine just made a motion that I now am not ignoring. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chapin. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Chapin.
Just the finance committee discussed this and uh was supported this general direction as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstain? Okay. We have passed that motion. Thank you all and thanks for um the ability to revise and and reflect uh when new information comes along. We are going to move along um to um kind of explore our urban collective bargaining. So we have a potential executive session to discuss the urban collective bargaining. Um, thanks to the amendment on the agenda.
Yep.
Um, or adjustment to the agenda. Um, so we um will need motions um to have a finding and then move. Um, and there's been some suggested language that uh Chapin uh Clayton set out ahead of time.
And so if you look at the read ahead, there's poor four motions that would uh help us get in and out of the executive session and approving the uh agreement. And so uh in order to go into executive session, we would first need a finding that premature public knowledge of GMT's bargaining positions in regard to labor negotiations would put GMT at a substantial disadvantage.
So I'm stop motion.
Uh, Susan, I assume that's a second Chapin?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Wonderful. Any opposed? Um, and I'm assuming no abstentions. We now need a motion to enter into executive session, which Chapin is making.
Yeah, I introduce a motion to enter executive session to discuss labor relations included in the executive session will be the GMT directors uh and uh obviously the board members and members of Vtrans present.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, thanks, Susan. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed or abstentions? Um, so we are going to enter executive session at nine oh three with GMT directors, our board members and Dan. So if you and we are restarting our public meeting at nine thirty-five with no action taken during executive session. Um, and so our next agenda item is to, I've lost my agenda, to um discuss the urban collective bargaining agreement. Um, and uh with that, uh hope to have an um emotion. Yes, thank you, Chapin.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, I want to say how much uh the authority really uh values our urban drivers. Our drivers really are the uh are the glue of of our work. And in that spirit, uh I move that we approve the collective bargaining agreement previously approved by the urban operator members of Teamsters five ninety-seven on August third, twenty twenty-five. The general manager is authorized to work with the Teamsters business agent on the formatting of the agreement and to correct typographical errors discovered before the agreement is signed by both parties.
Thank you. Paul, are you seconding?
I'm seconding and then just a quick comment. Some of us have see have seen a number of contracts over the years. And I must say, I'm the happiest with this contract as I've been with any of them. So congratulations. Clayton, I think what the job well done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yeah, Susan?
Yes, I I just want to say that um I'm um disappointed and unhappy to see the the most favored nation uh clause uh in this contract. Um, and it makes me uh very concerned about the authority's um uh ability to attract top talent to um its staff positions.
Thank you. Any additional discussion comments? I'll just say uh thanks to all who participated in this process, including Mike, who's not here. Um, and for all the time and energy research that went into um having this um where we are today. So thank you.
If I could just take a very quick moment to recognize uh those folks who are here. Uh, John Moore led this effort um uh in December and with his rural transfer, I took over. So John, thank you for getting this started. Uh, Jimmy, uh, you are invaluable in providing um advice on on how to approach um uh our operators in a respectful way. Nick, uh, great work in making sure we understood the financials. And Stephanie, who is not here, uh really was uh, you know, critical uh for making us um, you know, understand the potential impacts uh that uh the changes would have on on human resources. And definitely, um, uh, it was a joy working with uh Michael Scanlon and even though we love having Alona on the board, uh it was sad to uh sad to see him go.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
May.
Opposed? And abstentions? Looks like the um collective bargaining agreement passes. Um, so again, thank you. Um, we have run quite a bit all over, um but Clayton, I wanted to give you a few minutes to do your general manager um report and perhaps um if there's, I think we heard a lot from finance and leadership was certainly focused on um relevant stuff, but not outside of this meeting. So um hopefully we can skate through the rest.
And so uh you saw the four columns. Those are the things that are going to be my life for the next nine months. And so uh that's what I'll be working on uh on that roadmap. Um, and by the end of the week, um I'm going to be sending out a trip report for my trip to the Small Urban Network Executives Conference in Minnesota last week. Uh, really a great experience. Uh, and um there'll be a lot of information there that will be, I think, relevant for everybody here, including I'm going to be sending that to Vtrans because uh we got some federal updates that I think that they'll be interested in.
I'm glad you were able to go to that conference and feel connected to others like us. So thank you for um traveling to Minnesota.
It really made me feel better when I talked to the general manager who was cutting sixty-three percent of his service that month. So I was like, oh, you know, things aren't so bad.
All right. Um, and just briefly, board committees, finance, did you discuss anything that we didn't discuss today?
Uh, the only thing is Nick did give an update on the financials and it's fair to say that we're doing very well against budget.
That's good news. Thanks for sharing that. Um, and then leadership, I do not believe we discussed anything that we haven't already discussed unless my memory does not serve, which my memory doesn't always serve. But I see a nod from Clayton, so um moving right along to the knee, Commissioner, have any comments?
I'll just say a big thank you. It has been a lot of work um to have all these moving pieces, all these unknowns, um and to continue to operate day to day. Um, and I am grateful for the entire GMT team and I'm grateful for all of you who are here um to keep putting this organization um at the forefront and make sure that we are doing the best that we can for all um that we serve. So thank you very much. Um, and thank you, Jimmy, for letting me in the office the other day when I popped in. Um, I I appreciated that.
Oh, before we stop, something important.
Oh. And then you run away.
Does anyone recognize this sweater?
You're gonna have to stop blurring.
Oh, is it uh coming through?
So it looks like a sweater at the retreat. They have little teal patches on the arms. Is that what it was? Okay, it's not mine. I was just noticing. I was just describing.
Oh, okay.
We're getting a Harry Potter cloak of invisibility.
Yeah.
Well, if you are missing a sweater that looks like it's gray with teal on the arms, Clayton is holding it ransom.
Yes.
Hostage. Anyway, um, with all that, um, nothing more to say, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. The entire board moves. Does the entire board want to second that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Henry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you all so much and thank you for the extra time. Enjoy the last couple of weeks before school. And uh summer comes to an end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.